Good evening, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:05. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag, the state of New Mexico, with the symbol of perfect friendship among
Thank you very much. Board members, we have the agenda before us. Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Priscilla Maniulito.
Present.
Kevin Mitchell.
Here.
Lynn Heineman.
Present. Nope, sorry.
Sandra Jeff. Joe Manini.
Board members are moving to item two, approval of agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda upon questions on the considered agenda items, Madam President.
Madam President, can I ask, Mr. Manini, can I ask you to please exclude 5A, 1C, D until next meeting when Mr. Heineman and everyone's here?
Those are courts.
5A, I mean 5A, yes, C and D.
With those pulled, I restate my motion.
It's not even on, is it on yours?
Yeah, it's been revised and it's been posted already.
The revised version of the agenda, Mr. Manini, has executive session on there, and I would like to pull that, sir.
Pull the executive session?
Yes, sir.
That'll be fine also. Am I still on? Thank you.
Mr. Manini, you also had question?
I have questions on eight, H, eight I, and eight L. Just questions.
Okay, so we'll get down when we get to considered agenda items, then, okay? So, the motion, Mr. Manini, for approving of the agenda will be removing 5A, C, D, and also the executive session. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Maniulito?
A, we have public comment. We have four. Board members, before we start the public comment on the form, if we could maybe make some changes on the form, because right now we're asking, I think before our old form said not, you couldn't go past?
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
That's right.
Okay, and this makes it into a question form? And I think we need to, and then that other comment that was on there that stated the, anything pertaining to personnel, we could not hear about it due to it being personnel issue, but those are not on our public comment form, so I don't know if we need to revise our public comment form, but I think we need to relook at it.
They need to be reprinted as stated in our policy, and I've got some here.
You do? Okay. So we'll go ahead and move forward, maybe we can add that to our future agenda item. The first one I have, just right on top, Renee Harding.
Okay, good evening, board, guests, superintendent Chipetti, staff members who have attend. First and foremost, my name is Renee Harding, and I'm a parent from Navajo, New Mexico, and I have a student at Navajo Pine High School and at Navajo Elementary, and I have nieces and nephews at the middle school. And this evening, I just have a couple of concerns, and first and foremost, I want to thank the board members for sticking with us through everything that's been published in the paper and just comments that were made at the different board meetings, whether they were regular board meetings or special meetings. Thank you. Yeah. And then, I'd like to bring up an issue that I ran into at Navajo Elementary, and this is with our, I don't know if she's a certified nurse, a nurse assistant, but I have a son in the fourth grade, and he has allergies. And I brought in my forms from his doctor here in Gallup. He was on albuterol, and he was also on a, another inhaler. And I informed the nurses last year, or the nurse, and she never really asked for any information. And this year, with the teacher that I went to during parent-teacher conference, or open house, I'm sorry, the teacher was very much concerned, because I didn't even know that we were supposed to put it on Power School. So the whole staff of the elementary was informed. The fourth grade teacher sent me back down to the office and told me to speak to the principal. So I spoke to her, and I told her, nobody's ever asked me to fill out forms. And I did have the doctor, and I also filled out a form and dropped it off with the school last year for his allergies. Nobody said nothing. It was a school, I can't remember the form, like a plan type of form that comes from the hospital. And last year, that's all I turned in, and I spoke with my son, he knew what to do and how to use his inhalers and stuff. And this year, this teacher informed me that I was supposed to fill out other forms for food allergies and other allergies that he had. And I didn't even get contacted until a week after I turned in everything. And I just want to bring this up because now he's on, we have an emergency EpiPen that I sent him to school with, or I gave it to the nurse, and just for your information for other schools and students that deal with this, I think this should be brought up because it is a serious case for our students. And the other thing that I wanted to talk about is sports again. I know, Chipetti, I've been speaking to you about it at the high school, it's just, I would like a fair, across the board, no favoritisms, no, I've worked with this person before, turn in your application, let's do, just, let's interview these coaches. And I'd like your help, because I haven't heard anything, and so far with cross-country, we've been, the coach has been communicating with all the parents, and I just, I want to keep that up for our high school so we can set that standard across the board, instead of the principal saying, well, I've worked with this person, and I know this person, and this person's a good coach out of Gallup. I'd rather have her tell me, I've interviewed them, and this person, this person, and this person, we're all in attendance, and this is how we feel. It's gonna help our students. Because athletes, I think, should be held at a higher standard. Academics first, and then they're athletes. And with the coaches we've had, you know, they, some of them fall between the crack, and some of them play when they're not supposed to be playing. I hold my kids to that high standard, and I think we should, as a district, let it be across the board. And again, I just want to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, board of directors, staff, guests. My name is Monica Yasi, I'm here as a parent. I've been, first of all, I want to greet the board of directors, and I'd like to thank all of you for your continued support for the Indian education program and allowing us the opportunity to serve our Native American students. First of all, I'd like to say is that the school year is a new beginning, but it seems to be, it seems or appears as though we're still combating a continuous ongoing issue of establishing a working relationship with the superintendent and his administration. We, as a committee, once again, have been faced with frustration and problems regarding the proposed actions regarding our membership, and I believe a meeting was held Thursday. An opinion was given by Navajo Nation JOM regarding our membership. And the committee there asked for something in black and white regarding our committee of what conflict of interest for the school officials, the definition for that was supposed to be. And Navajo Nation refuses to ask BIA for the definition since they get their contract through them. So verbally, they defined school officials as school employees. I won't get into too much detail of my report as I stipulate all my concerns there. The things that we're still ongoing and facing is the audit issues. A proposed action plan was going to be reported by our superintendent at our last meeting, but it wasn't, I believe that he stopped because it wasn't on the agenda. They stopped him from sharing the proposed action plan regarding our audit issue. I don't know what the proposed action is. The concerns right now I have is, are JOM applications still going through the process and pending approval? In the past, Alice Dotson, Alice Benali, used to inform us to continuously have our meetings even though our application's being processed, because we still need to continue to serve as JOM committee members. Now, it seems as though we're put on hold. We're getting contradicting information from Navajo Nation, the Gallup McKinley County Schools, and us serving as a JOM committee. It seems like now we're on pause, and now we're being dismantled. And that's not good on our part. I believe that we need to, I thought we were gonna work together, I truly did. I thought we were going to start fresh, let's work together, let's put our differences aside, get on that boat, and start something. We got an appointed JOM coordinator, that was another issue again, from his own administration. It's just one thing after another. In my opinion, it's like a retaliation to you, board of directors, and we're being used to get back at you, all you that are sitting there. That's my opinion, that's how I look at it. And that's not fair for parents, it's not fair for our students. Our money got taken away, over $200,000 was taken back. They want to talk about audit issues, they want to talk, bring up something that should have been water under the bridge. I put that aside and thought we were gonna work together. If this audit issue's gonna come up again, I have issues. Why did they appoint a legislator to be our coordinator in the first place? Why did they put it under the wraps of paying her with unrestricted funds? That was a conflict of interest. Lot of things, we had questions on, nothing, none of our cries were heard, and now this is being brought up again. I'm surprised our membership in last month's board meeting in July, actually, not August, but July, Mr. Chipetti didn't, our superintendent didn't attend, he sent his associate to attend at this meeting. We had on that board our membership, our terms, and now everything's dismantled again. Now, they're telling us that we need to be elected annually, and yet, we have a resolution that serves two, three years. I have my supporting documents, but if I don't have a supporting document that I was elected at the school, that doesn't put me as a JOM committee member. What are we doing here? What are we doing here? Why are we, what did we do? I mean, we, it's like the whole committee's being dismantled. We barely get parents to come in here because of all the issues that are being raised since last year. Two coordinators were appointed at his, in his office, not us, we refused, we weren't even part of it. The last coordinator, we, I agreed to it, because she worked in there before. And that became an issue in the email from his administration. I'm really disappointed that we're gonna start battling this issue again. Audits, memberships, now what? Our concern should be, how are we gonna get that money back? How can we move forward? How can we better serve our students? What can we do? What plan of action can we do to better serve and make things go a little easier? I thought that's what we were doing, but everything's a big mess again. So, that's my report.
Hello, everybody. My name's Jeff James. Thank you, board, for giving me the opportunity to speak, superintendent. I have some issues that, concerns that I want to speak about. Just like what she kind of talked into you a little bit about it, I've just been kind of staying quiet, observing. I'm gonna talk about these banners that are up right here. They mean something to us as parents. I was a parent to Gallup McKinley County School, I have a daughter and a son that went and attended it, and I had to withdraw one of my daughters, one of my daughter from Gallup McKinley County School, put her in a private school, and she's doing good now. There's a, she's going to school at Grand Canyon University, and there's 13,000 students on campus. Out of that 13,000 students, there's only 20 Navajos. And then 20 Navajos that are online students. My concern is that these pillars are being broken. And I want to use this as my evidence to what's happening to our school district. And I'm gonna speak to you, Mr. Chipetti. You know who I am, I dealt with you in February, there were some issues that rose up at Teru, and everything just got shoved underneath the carpet, just like what she was talking about. And I started to study this thing that I observed and dealt with in Teru. And this past couple of weeks, what's been happening here at the school board meeting. And one word came to me, in what I dealt with. This word, it tries to take your voice, it makes your voice silent, it makes you not being heard by people, and it wants to control you, it wants to take your credibility away. That's what it did to me. This word is called nepotism. Nepotism is when a leader selects individuals that are closely related. That's what that is. So through this ordeal that I dealt with, was because of that. Now, this school district is battling that same thing, that same word. It's a dangerous word, it separates, it takes your voice away, it takes your credibility away, it makes you nothing. I've observed what's happening in the district here. There's people in here that I dealt with. That word describes it, that individual that I dealt with at Teru, he's under that word. And that's what this district is built on. That's why our voices aren't heard. People that are out there, Teyagai, Crum Point, those schools that are out there, they have voices. March 7th, I came here. That same lady that came from Navajo Pine, she came here March 7th, her concern was her son, two of her sons. Nothing was done, Crum Point. It's all about that. Your number one agenda is finance, sir. You want to control the finance, and you want, your number one goal, I've observed you, is those people that are close to you. Your focus is on their future, not the future of our student, not the future of our parents. It's sad, when you go down to Grand Canyon University, it's the greatest university. You should see the facility, you should see what professors are being offered down there. And my daughter is one of the 20 Native Americans that are going to school down there. 20 out of 13,000. A lot of our students go up here to UNM, and a lot of parents don't even realize this. UNM is trying to break off so they can make that a community college. You know why? They're failing, it's a failing campus. The success rate for them graduating is slow, sir. It's slow. Majority of those kids going over there are Native Americans. And here we sit here, and wondering why our young people aren't succeeding. Because this has to start with you. You have to bring in good resources for them. If my daughter would have went to Gallup McKinley County School, guess what? The resources and the tools she needed to stay up ahead with them, she could have failed. She couldn't do it, she said, Dad, I couldn't have done it. GCU grade point average is 3.84, sir. Every student on campus averages that much. There's 13,000 students, sir, and my daughter, out of that 13,000, there's 200 of them going to school for accounting, and she's among that. And she's graduating this coming spring. My concern is why we can't send our Native Americans over there? Why can't we send them to a university that brings professors that start at Phoenix? There's multi-billionaires that are her professors. Their success rate after college is amazing, and these parents here at the district don't know about that. Why, we're too focused, your focus is too much on finance, the future of your nepotism, those individuals that you surrounded yourself with. I dealt with those people, and it's an ugly feeling, sir. These words mean nothing to those individuals, they break them. I have documents here, right here, sir. You've been, you heard about our chapter meetings. These individuals came to that chapter meeting, guess what? They lied over and over. I have a newspaper article here. I've asked a Navajo, independent to come to those meetings. I found out that those people don't, they, they want nothing to do to expose anything that has to do with you. But the Navajo Times came, and they came and did an article. So, my concern is, the board, I'm gonna speak to you now, my concern is looking to these issues. We're talking about the future of our young generations. Nobody's preparing them, nobody's leading them in this road of success. They're failing. Yes, they go to school one year, yes, they go to school two years, guess what? They're out. They end up becoming young parents, or they fail, because when they get into these colleges, guess what? They call placement tests. And when they do that placement test, guess what? They start two years below. So by the time they get into that, they end up using two years of their resource. And then finally, they realize that they gotta start their program, whatever degree that they're after, and they're burnt out.
Mr. James, if you can wrap it up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, thank you, that's my concern. So if you guys want to get ahold of me, you guys know where I'm at, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. James. Next public comment will be Valerie Arviso.
Good evening. Good day. Good morning, school board member, Mr. Chipetti, staff, community members. Good morning. Good evening. 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 Good morning. Teru Middle School. Good evening. Seventh grade. Good morning. Good evening. Good morning. Good evening. Good morning. Good evening. Good evening. Good morning. Indian Education Committee Parent Rep. Good morning. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. CFR twenty-five. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good evening. Good evening. Good morning. Good evening. Good morning. Good morning. Good evening. Good evening. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good evening. Good morning. 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 National J O M Conference. Good morning. 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 That's how I see it. Good morning. 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 Memorandum of Agreement. No. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. That Memorandum of Agreement is to serve our Navajo children and our Navajo community members, parents, the whole Navajo nationwide. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. I'm not here as an employee. I'm here as a parent. Good morning. 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 United States President. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning.
Thank you. We'll move on to our agenda. We're on three approval of minutes. We have A August fifteen, two thousand sixteen special meeting.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Menini.
I have a question or two since I wasn't there. It says copies of the superintendent's vision were provided to the school board. I'd like to have a copy, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Therefore, if that would be I approve this, I make a motion that I cannot make a motion because I wasn't there.
Yep. I'm motion to approve the August fifteenth special meeting.
Thank you, Kevin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Menini.
Abstain.
Ms. Manuelito.
Yes. Next one is B. August fifteen, regular meeting.
Question on old business. On section B in their old business, it says the approval of evaluation instrument was an action item. I'd like to see this new evaluation form, please. That was moved from thirty-nine questions to twenty-four. And I'd like to have a copy of that, please.
Mr. Menini, I emailed those to you.
No, ma'am. I did not get it. I emailed you that I did not get it today.
Are you back? I will double check on that, but I I was sure I emailed all the board members. But I will double check.
I believe Mr. Chappetti should get that copy, too.
I think if you email it to Joan, I think she can get a hard copy to Mr. Menini.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
And then with that, I'll I'll motion to approve the August fifteenth regular meeting.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Roll call, please.
Mr. Menini.
Abstain.
Ms. Manuelito.
Yes. See August twenty-fourth, special meeting.
Madam President, I'd like to make a correction. And that the time on the first sentence was at four o'clock, not six.
Okay.
Therefore, I move media minutes to be approved as presented.
Motion made by Joe Menini for approval of August twenty-fourth meeting minutes. Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito.
Yes. Thank you. Number four, we have approval of concerned agenda items.
Madam President, I'd like to move that the approval of concerned agenda items be approved with I need to have questions answered on eight H, eight I, and eight L. And we're removing the reports on A, five A, C, and D. I don't know when you want those questions, before or after or during.
Go ahead, Mr. Menini.
Okay. First of all, question on eight H. Eight H. That concerns with the donation from Boobinie Insurance and five oh five burgers. I believe this is a problem with Title IX. It does not have the anything for the Title IX issue of female students. So I'd like to decline that.
If we could get some clarification from Mr. Chappetti on this. I I think every donate to me, every donation is very important. But I think maybe if we ask some questions or if we can make some recommendations that would help us not to decline a donation made to our students. I don't know. I'm I'm just kind of. Mr. Chappetti.
Madam President, members of the board, I would recommend accepting it. But again, it does put us in a potential issue once it's spent for Title IX. We always always are looking for money for our schools. Especially since I'm financially driven. We look at these donations and they are targeted for football. Once that money is spent, we'd have to report it in our annual document. And we need to ensure that then that the female sports are also spending comparable money. This is one of the reasons why we're pushing to go to one fundraising group for the school. Because then as they're taking in money, they can dole it out allocably among all the programs. Football, basketball, these are the big programs that have more spectators, more community support, and are able to draw more donations. And but then it does put us in a big issue. And we have been told at the New Mexico School Association of Business Officials, it's a hard acronym for me to get, that this year, the auditors are going to be pulling Title IX, looking at Title IX. Or in the past, we had the Equities Act, but nobody ever looked at it. So we have to ensure that we're spending equally upon male and female sports. So my recommendation would be to accept it, to hold it as the school is also looking for matching funds for the female sports. That's something that was done in Ro Rancho. They were given huge donations for their baseball teams. And they had to put it on hold until they had equivalent facilities and such for their girls program.
So go ahead, Mr. Mitchell.
Okay. You know, I I think I was wanting to request that we get some type of educational from the M M M A coming in here and discussing the whole Title IX issue with everybody. I think it's going to be a big problem. I know that anything that goes into our actual district activity fund is subject to Title IX. To whereas before, if it was their own booster club and they did their own account and stuff, then it wasn't subject to Title IX. I don't I don't I don't. So I would like I really would like some education on Title IX.
Madam President, with your permission, I can set that up. But it includes all funds spent on any program, whether it is public, private, et cetera. We have to report any money raised by boosters. We have to raise any money donated by parents. Everything that that is spent on an organized group in Gallup McKinley County Schools has to be reported. But with your permission, Madam President, I can set up that training.
I I would like to request to see if Boobinie and five oh five would consider splitting that their donation due to the Title IX recommendation or the Title IX new requirement that I don't know, maybe maybe if they can do that, we could approve it at that time. Or you could get back to us and see if there's other matching funds that could be set up. And then we could approve it.
Okay. Madam President, I might I really would think that maybe, you know, after we get the educational backing from the M M M A exactly on the funding, then we can answer these questions more clearly. But for right now, it's going to be hard and it's going to be to me, this is my 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 own point of view here. It's going to be whichever the richest kids are going to be the ones bringing in the donations from their family businesses or whoever has a child playing football, basketball, cheerleading, whatever. They're going to be the ones bringing in the donations. And then we're going to have a hard time finding or matching funds. I don't know. That's just the way I see it. So we're going to have to really, I think we need to have an actual discussion item on this as far as activity funds and activity spending and donations for our athletic athletics.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Menini.
I'd like to make a comment on behalf of the New Mexico Activities Association and New Mexico School Board Association that McCutty Law Firm offers training at our different sites for regional conferences. Not regional, but state conferences held in Santa Fe and in Albuquerque. And I've been in attendance in quite a those. And therefore, I'd suggest that the other school board members notify McCutty and Carthy Law Firm to ask for that training rather than New Mexico Activities Association because McCutty Law Firm gets those speakers to come in for us.
We've had those I've attended where we've had those speakers, but we've never had anybody from I've never attended any of the seminars where they had someone from M M M A actually come in and do a presentation. It was always just the law firms.
I I just went to Farmington this this morning to the Cooperative Educational Services meeting they had up there. And they have been offering trainings and finances, procurement, audits. I mean, they mentioned a whole, a whole lot of strategic plans and, you know, technology. They offered a lot. I guess Labat is now doing the food services thing. And it's just a variety of trainings, excuse me, even secondary teacher training. And I think if we maybe approach them also, I mean, all their training is free, I heard.
N M A A will charge us, I believe, a hundred dollars just to cover their expenses to come and back. C E S, I don't know what they will charge. We'd have to check with them. McCutty Law, being the law firm, is going to charge us per hour to get here to do and such. So it's I'll go with whatever direction, but if you need the training, I will organize with guys. with guidance.
And the Bloomfield, the, I was talk, I was sitting there, sitting, um, talking with the Bloomfield, um, superintendent. Yes. And she told me they did, that she uses these guys all the time and all their training's free. So maybe we can request for that kinda training, um, and see if they can assist us. That way it doesn't cost us or the district any additional funds.
So my recommendation, Madam President, is when you go to approve the consent item would be to table eight H pending further knowledge from the two companies on possibly splitting and training, et cetera.
Yeah, 'cause I don't wanna open the door on something we can't go back and fix.
Mr. Manini, you also had a question on eight I?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Eight I is a question on approval of grants, instructional childcare, and it concerns on page, uh, about the third page, I guess, fourth page, under expenditures. It's the top right-hand page under expenditures. The first part A, it says Socorro Consolidated Schools shall act as a federal agent, and I'd like to know why.
Fiscal agent. Um, Mr. Manini, this, this is a grant that, that does come out of, um, the Socorro Consolidated Schools has been the fiscal agent for, oh my goodness, all the way back to when I was a special ed coordinator, you had to apply through them. So the PED grads program goes through them with an intergovernmental agency agreement, and then they work with each of the districts to set up programs and, and fund the programs. So, um, it's just their, I guess, flow-through funding sources, the way they, they've used it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, question on that, and so Giovanna, um, like, um, so what we do is we would use money out of our own district first and then apply for the reimbursement. Is that the way it is? And then if that's so, where, which part of the budget would we be getting the money to, um, start, or start running this project?
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Chappetti, members of the audience, um, just like all of our other reimbursable grants, our operational fund actually pays upfront for expenditures. And then we're actually reimbursed. With this one, the reimbursement acts a little bit differently. We actually reimburse based upon a percentage. So that's based upon the Socorro grads, they send us their forms, we complete their forms and give them any information they request, and then they send us the funds.
Um, and this is the first time we're working with this program?
No, sir, we've had this grant in our district probably at least since 2002, when I started with the district.
And we, we haven't had any problems as far as being reimbursed?
No, no, no problems whatsoever. Um, prior to Sally, whose, whose name you'll see on there right now, um, there was another individual, they have worked with us very, very well, we've never had an issue being reimbursed. Um, they're very supportive of the program, um, and they've always tried to give us as much money as they can possibly give us. In the past two years, we've actually received what's called a grad plus grant. It's not in there right now, but I'm hoping we get that one again this year.
Okay. And I saw a name somewhere, but I can't find it right now. Who's our director for the, our, our?
So this is directly under Tommy Campos, who is working over at Gallup Central High. Um, she is an instructor at Gallup Central High, but she has been at the forefront of this program for several years. Um, and her and her staff do an excellent job in helping those kids, um, stay in school and get their degree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanks.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chappetti, thank you.
Um, eight L.
Uh, this is to relate the question to maintenance goals. And, uh, just, I'd like to, uh, I'm pay, policy's two dash zero, Mr. Triplehorn.
Yes, sir.
Two point zero, it says the following goals for 2012, 13 school year. I'd like you to redo that page and say 16, 17 school year, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
And that would be fine with me, and also the goal's the same thing. That's just that one page that needs to be updated?
Yes, sir, I'll fix that.
I agree with all everything else that you've provided us, thank you. Right, policy two.
Madam President, I would, I would recommend approval of all consent items except tabling eight H.
I wanted to ask about the uplift, um, community school. Um, is that, again, something we do annually with them? Or is this?
Yes, Madam President, charter schools do not have their own busing for several years. Charter school has contracted with us each year. We have made sure, um, Mr. Bond has made sure that it doesn't interfere with our bus runs. So they do start later and finish later than us, so we do our bus runs. And once our bus runs are done, then we do theirs. And then we have agreed upon a, a set amount that the PED has agreed upon in there. It's been, been a good, good thing for, for their school, their community, and, um, us reaching out to, to ensure, and we're not losing money on the deal.
Okay.
And it pays out.
Do they handle their own, um, security and enforcement of, on the school bus, or do we have in charge of that?
Um, just, just like our schools, um, if we have a disciplined behavior on the bus, the bus driver writes a referral, and the, then the administrator of the school, in this case, the administrator of the charter would handle the discipline.
Thank you.
If, if our bus driver or Mr. Bond chooses because of the behavior to deny a kid, um, on the bus, then it's our policy on that.
Sir, I'll pass this on to you, there's a Facilities Management Conference, I'm not sure if you guys, they gave that to us today also. Any other questions on the consent agenda items, board members?
No, ma'am, thank you very much, Mr. Chappetti, for pulling eight H. And therefore I approve the consent agenda items be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Manini. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito?
Um, yes. Just to add, um, I did ask, um, Mr. Chappetti for, on, on Under New Business about the UVA, if there's any way that, I think board members need to be, um, more aware of the UVA program, and if they, if, if any of those trainings will be available for board members. Moving on, we have the Study Circle Report, under A, Report One, a Superintendent's Report. We're getting it, Mr. Manini.
Good afternoon, everyone, evening, I should say. Um, we have finally compiled-
No, it's fine.
-the data from the school report cards. Um, the district report card will not be out until after the appeal deadlines. Um, we have not seen any data in our, our report cards to, to request an appeal. But I'm very excited because, um, at, at the heart of everything I do i- is centered around improving student outcomes. And as we look, um, I've broken down, we've, we've done a lot of reports, but we haven't done it by board members' areas, so I broke down the schools by the board members' districts. So District One, belonging to Mr. Mitchell, um, we've broken down our schools in the District One, which is north of Gallup, um, Chi Dodge, Twin Lakes, Tohachi Elementary, Middle School and High School, Navajo Elementary, Middle School and High School. And as we consider over a three-year period, um, we've got some good movers. Um, Chi Dodge has moved from an F to a C. Twin Lakes has moved from an F to a C. Tohachi Elementary, a D to a C. Tohachi Mid, F to a C. Tohachi High School, C to a B. Navajo Elementary and Middle School, um, remained at D's. Navajo Mid, kinda growing and then dropping again this year. And then Navajo Pine High School, static at a C. So, um, for, for District One, we've seen some good movement, um, where we, we started off with two Cs, three D's, and three Fs, and we're now, um, happy to report only two D's, five Cs, and a B. So everything's continually growing there. Very positive to C, and, and we're hoping to continue, um, implementing items for student success to, to continue raising the student achievement.
Superintendent?
Yes, yes, sir.
Um, for Navajo Mid?
Yes, sir.
Um, they still had the, just the one principal for the high school and the mid, was, is, when this?
We, we have a principal and一名 students, yes.
Okay. So, so I'm just kinda thinking maybe if, if there was their own, had their own principal, maybe they would have been able to sustain that C or having to share the principal plus the, I don't know, I'm, I'm just kinda, um, I don't know if that was anything that was, that couldn't be considered or, 'cause I, I know that, you know, the high school and the mid were sharing a principal plus, um, but I don't know, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Right. Um, it's, it's something we look at similar size to Reima High, um, and that's a model that's been used. But again, we are looking at why our schools are static, um, we're also looking at why our schools have gained. Um, so we will look at that to see if that is a root cause, and if so, you know, that would be a, a correction we can make through the budgetary process. So thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you.
We, we go to District Two. Um, District Two is Ms. Jeff. Um, she has Catherine Miller, I'll, um, still put her truck next to it, so, um, there. Uh, the three schools in Crown Point and Sayagai. Um, as we see there, Catherine Miller has grown from an F to a D. Crown Point Elementary, F to a C. Crown Point Mid, D to an A, that is, that one's exciting. Crown Point High slipped a little from a B to a C, and then Sayagai grew C to a B. So from one B, one C, one D, and two Fs, we've now gone to one A, one B, two Cs, and a D. Tremendous growth in the Crown Point area. District Three, Ms. Manulito, um, has a kind of a smorgasbord of schools, I'm gonna say, um, including the three schools in Thru, um, both in Reima, and then two in town, Stagecoach and, and Gallup Central High School. Um, Thru Elementary, wonderful growth, um, F to a B. That one's just phenomenal, very exciting. Yes, you can clap, 'cause that one's, that one's exciting. Thru Middle School kinda dropped in the one year, C to an F, but they really buckled down and, and have started bringing that back up and, and has raised F to an E, an F to a D. So still for a two-year outcome, though, it is a drop in one letter grade. Thru High School went from C to an F, but has come, bounced back, um, very well, back up to a C. Reima Elementary, um, kinda been playing D to a C to a D. Uh, Reima High School, C to a B to a C, so there's some fluctuation there. Stagecoach Elementary is growing, F to a D, and then Central High, um, just to maintain a C with their population, I'm, I'm very proud of that one also. So some great growth, and then some, some areas that we're really targeting and addressing. District Four, Mr. Manini. Um, David Skeet Elementary down south, and then he has a slew of in-town schools, Lincoln, Onyate, Washington, Turpin Elementary's, Chief Manulito Middle School, and Gallup High School. Um, David Skeet, wonderful growth, D to a B, just phenomenal again. Lincoln, D to a B, great growth. Onyate, um, steady growth from a D to a C. Washington, two grades, F to a C. Turpin, D to a C. Chief at Manulito, D to a B. And Gallup High being the only static school at a C. So out of the seven schools, six of them growing, and several growing multiple grades was just phenomenal. I'm very proud of District Four. And then District Five, Mr. Heniman, having a lot of the east side of Gallup, Indian Hills, Rocky View, Jefferson, Red Rock, and Roosevelt Elementary's. Gallup Mid, Kennedy Mid, and then Mi'amira High School. Uh, Indian Hills was the big fame last year, F to an A. They continued with that A to show it wasn't a fluke. Very proud of Indian Hills. Uh, Rocky View, solid growth, Deb Arthur going from an F to a C was solid. Jefferson, C dropped to a D. New principal coming in there, Ms. Keon, has gotten it back to a C and is rising. Um, Red Rock, um, B dropped but came back, so they've maintained their B. Roosevelt, um, steady growth from an F to a D. Gallup Middle School, um, Dr. Ames, or Dr. Lovato, I'm sorry, still use her maiden name, um, great growth, D to a B. Kennedy Mid also, under Ms. Tayah, D to a B. And then Mi'amira High School, started with the C, showing some positive, and then, then slipped again. So, a- again, almost every school there, um, Jefferson and Mi'amira maintaining, every other school growing, um, some of the biggest movers also. So, again, um, great to see these schools doing what they're doing. Most exciting thing, thirty-five schools in the state, sixth largest school in the state of New Mexico, and we have no failing grades. There's not many big districts that can say that. Eighty percent of our schools have a C or better, just totally excited. Seventy-four percent of our elementary's C or better, seventy-one percent of our middle schools C or better, and a hundred percent of our high schools have a C or better. Now, the high schools can puff up a little bit, but then we have to say, hey, those elementary and middle schools have the As and Bs, let's get them high schools going. Got a challenge to all the high school principals on that one. Big jumpers have raised four letter grades in two years, that's Indian Hills, raising three letter grades in two years, Thru Elementary and Crown Point Mid, very, very blessed. And then eleven schools have raised two letter grades in two years. Um, these are our big jumpers, and I'm very proud of them, and if they can continue doing, we're gonna close the achievement gap with the state of New Mexico. Now, all of this has been the positive, um, but with every positive, we know we have some concerns still out there in our district. We're not where we want to be, we still have a long way to go. Um, growth of our Q1 subgroup, and Q1, the state of New Mexico is our bottom twenty-fifth percentile. So our bottom students, our bottom twenty-five percent, and it's a three-year, they're growing below state average. So we're, we're looking at the root cause, why. We addressed it a little bit in the principals' meeting. We're saying our tier-one instruction is broken, we're not reaching every kid, 'cause those bottom twenty-five aren't growing the way they should be growing, it's expected. That or our interventions are broken, so we're asking the schools to take a very close look at that. We wanna close the achievement gap, and these are the bottom kids, we need to close it quicker. And the state's growing quicker than we are at that quartile. Um, four of our schools are matching state average with Cs, almost all our other schools have an F in that area on their report card. So it's an area we really have to look at and target. Current standing, and current standing is measured by proficiency rates, um, proficiency rates at our, most of our schools are still below the state average. We're not as proficient as the other schools, but the good thing is, is since we're growing, our, our overall growth is, is higher than the state average, we're closing that gap. We are catching those groups, it's great here. And then our high schools, our four-year graduation rates, except for Sayagai, Sayagai beats the state average, very proud to say. But the rest of our schools are not graduating students as, on a four-year cohort with the same percentage as the state of New Mexico. And I blame a lot of that on our mobility rates, we have a lot of students moving back and forth, going, um, and, and it's very difficult to track all of our students, um, and, and a lot of them are reported as dropouts, where actually they're graduating from a BIE school- where actually they're graduating from a BIE school or a school in Arizona, since we're so close to the border. So we are asking the state to look at, and it's something we brought up when we were discussing the IGA with the Hess Committee, is if they could look at doing something to have a common identifier. Every student in the state of New Mexico that goes to public school, whether it's public or charter, has a unique identification number. So if our kid moves from here to Albuquerque, here to Farmington, here to Hobbs, their number goes with them, so we know where they ended up. But if they go from here to Wingate, we don't know they go, unless they request records. So we're asking for every student on the sovereign nation to also have a unique number, so we can track and see where that subgroup of students are going. Hopefully, that will help with our four-year cohorts. But again, our college and career readiness is very important to get there. And I'm very happy to say our college and career readiness grades have been going up. So my big personal thank you is to everybody. Because to change that report card, and you look at all the areas that are required, from proficiency to growth in the bottom twenty-five percent, to the growth in the top seventy-five percent, to overall growth, to graduation rates and attendance, the questionnaires that go out that students fill out at the older grades, parents fill out at the super young grades, you know, it's a big team effort. So I have to thank the administrators, our teachers, the support staff in the schools, and here at Central Office, bus drivers, everybody, students, parents, and the community. Because without a team effort, we're not going to have those scores. And right now, I'm ecstatic with the scores. Last year, I compared us to other districts in the area. And some of those schools that were showing great growth died this year, just dropped. It was a one-year thing. Other districts like populations to us, were still outperforming. Grants in Central. We're just very happy with our results. And I couldn't thank that group anymore for being committed to our students and doing what we're doing. The data, the data is a two-year now. Two years of solid growth. So we've proved it's not a fluke. And we're going to make it go a third year, I hope. Questions, Board?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chpeti. Appreciate the presentation. And I wish all those people that were here at the beginning, were here in attendance for that, they would have seen how, what we are doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have one question.
Just, yes.
Under recognition, we still haven't given out those four awards to our community members that received recognition in our Regional One, I believe it's, yeah. Mr. Murphy, Mr., Dr. Aldreddy. And Dr. Tempest, and our Indian Hills principal.
Well, I'm just, I just wanted to say too, that the, for some of you that may have arrived later, the, under reports, C and D, since that was an item that Mr. Hitteman brought up, I want it on the agenda, we move that to the next board meeting. So C and D will be added to the next board meeting, because we know Lynn, Mr. Hitteman, has a lot of, or some questions on those two topics. Mr. Mitchell?
I don't know, I was thinking about, it's probably too late now, but I don't know, I was thinking about the donations. Because I know they wanted to give the donations for football use. And I don't know if they're in need of helmets and stuff that they had on there, you know? Okay, okay, that's all I want to add. And then the next thing, under, well, I don't know if it, it wouldn't be under superintendent's report, but you know, I would like to maybe set up another work session, like we had, we just did one work session with the IEC, and try and get things in order the way we said we wanted them to go. I don't know, we want to set up another work session with them and try to start working with them. And I don't know what they're, what, what's really going on behind the scenes. But you know, we did the one work session, we said we'd follow up with another. We haven't done that yet, so.
And I think that's something that is needed, because I think we kind of dropped the ball where we said we were, that was, that would be ongoing. And I think two board members, Mike and I see, I think we wanted to continue that collaboration with, and I think that we need to continue to provide that support. I don't want them to feel that they're not being supported. And there's a lot of concerns that were mentioned. And I think we just need to continue to be there for them also. But we, maybe, I noticed we don't have that anymore too, our future agenda topics on our agenda. Maybe we can add that.
I still like the format of you all sending your information to the board presidency, seeing to me, and then we have the discussion on how, how that information gets disseminated, whether board communication?
If you guys have, like that, I'll write it down. And we can. Work session. Well, we'll look at our calendars at the end of the agenda. Reports to Services for Exceptional Students Report.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Chpeti, and all of our wonderful guests. I wanted to give you just a brief update on special education and gifted education, and how we are serving our students this year, some new initiatives that we've adopted. For those of you who don't know me, I am Ullalia Gonzalez. I am the coordinator, or the, I was the coordinator. I am the Director for Services for Exceptional Students. The first thing is to identify the grants or funding streams that support the needs of students with disabilities, as well as students identified as gifted. There are six budgets that I manage. IDEA B, which is K through twelve, preschool IDEA B. IDEA B for private schools. And then there is also a Real Results Grant under IDEA B at four of our elementary schools, Lincoln, Tohatchee, Thiru, and Jefferson. And then we also receive funding from Title VIII for special education. And lastly, Medicaid. We serve students that are identified as having a disability in thirteen categories, including autism, deafness, deaf-blindness, hearing impairments, intellectual disabilities, multiple disabilities, other health impairments, orthopedic impairments, severe emotional disturbance, specific learning disabilities, including dyslexia, speech and language impairments, traumatic brain injuries, visual impairments, including blindness. And in New Mexico, we also recognize the category of developmental delay in our students that are younger than ten years old. Beginning of this year, we've been working to make sure that our schools are adequately staffed, both with gifted, teachers of the gifted, as well as teachers of students with special needs. In addition to that, we ensure that our schools are staffed with educational assistance to support program initiatives. And we also consider significant needs for students that have significant impairments, that need more assistance with personal care or supervision and safety. Item number three, we look at ancillary service providers. We have experienced some really severe staffing shortages. It's not just unique to Gallup McKinley County Schools. It's something that school districts experience across the country. In particular, with speech and language pathologists, it's a national shortage. So while we have eight speech and language pathologists on board as our employees, we also have to utilize contract services. In addition, we utilize contract services through, for evaluation services. This is for school psychologists, as well as educational diagnosticians. And we do have a couple contractors that support our district staff for occupational therapy. The challenge we've been experiencing more extremely lately is with interpreters for our students that communicate through American Sign Language. And I'm happy today, because we found not only two contracting companies, but the people along with those companies that will be here starting tomorrow to serve our students with hearing impairments. So that's really exciting for us in our world. We celebrated quite a bit today, talking about that. And then we contract with an audiologist, our service units that are fully staffed, physical therapists, social workers, nursing, our administrative, our records clerks, and our early childhood department. This year, we also took on a resource management tool called Acelify. It serves several functions. One is Medicaid billing. So we are eligible for reimbursement from the state for health-related services that we provide to students. Those being nursing, PT, OT, speech, social work, all of those things that students need. The state reimburses us for a portion of that, and then it's basically pooled in a Medicaid fund and then is used to assist in either supporting additional positions, equipment, supplies that support health-related needs of students. Acelify is our web-based tool that we use to also document and capture services delivered to students. And these are based on IEP services. The exciting thing about Acelify is that it also is able to bring some accountability in terms of staff and how they spend their time, in terms of allocating resources, so that we're efficient and effective in doing so. So it allows us to do that. And this is particularly important when people are really asking about the allocations of related service providers, and do we really need as many as we have? And helping them understand the, understand the unique needs of our district, including travel time, and including the fact that we have to work with so many contracting agencies. We also are reimbursed for any transportation that's provided, if it's modified transportation and a student has a related service appointment on that day. We're looking at September 30th as our target for full implementation of Acelify. We did a time study in April and May to have our staff really think critically about what, how am I spending my time during the day? How much of it is direct services to students? And what other types of things am I responsible for? And how do you quantify what those, those items or activities, what part of the day do they consume? Because of special education is a very litigious situation, you know, that can develop pretty rapidly. It's really important for staff to be able to document, as well as be able to show student progress towards IEP goals. We've also been working with principals, coordinators and I, on graduation reviews. We did talk about our cohort in terms of graduation, and how does, how do students with IEPs impact the graduation rate? Something that's really important to us. And what we do in the fall is make sure that all of our seniors, based on whichever diploma option they're on, standard ability or career, that they have a strategic plan to meet all the graduation requirements by May. And if they're not on target, to make sure that we're having the conversation with parents. No one wants to show up in April and have students not graduate after all the graduation plans are made. So we do that with principals, as well as the teachers that serve the students directly at the school. This year, we also launched a huge infusion of equipment, resources, curriculum to what we call our low-incidence disability classrooms. So these are classrooms or programs that serve students with more specific, or more significant needs, and students that generally fall on the ability or career diploma options. But we made sure they had all the equipment that brought their classroom up to the 21st century, which is a huge leap for us. We also made sure that they had curriculum to support their learning. Mr. Chpeti has been talking about what are we doing for our students in that lower quartile? And how are we raising the achievement of students with IEPs? We want to make sure that our, our teachers and our principals have tools to meet the needs of our students. Some that have difficulty with speaking, some that have difficulty with writing or thinking, some that have difficulty with moving around the room. But making sure that we have accessibility built into our schools. So we've adopted several different curriculums. And one is a digital, we're really excited about this digital online curriculum. And it's actually just reading material that's accessible to students with significant cognitive disabilities. What we don't like to see is to walk into a classroom and have a seventeen-year-old student reading Charlotte's Web. And Mr., we laugh, but that happens. A seventeen-year-old student should be able to access material and curriculum that's age-appropriate, just like their peers. That's something that we're really striving towards meeting. They should also have access to the general education content and standards. And technology helps us do that. We have also, are in the process of implementing EdMark reading. Some of our students have really significant difficulty with reading. And some of our students with more significant cognitive impairments may never be able to read with fluency or comprehension, but we want them to be able to read the safety signs in their environment. We want them to be able to fill out an application for a job. We want them to be able to correspond with their family via email or text. So that's one of the curriculums that we approached. Google Read and Write is a reading and writing curriculum that is accessible to all students and all staff in Gallup McKinley. And this is also accessible, most importantly, of course, in my world, to students with disabilities. So there are tools within online networking and on the computer to either read text to the student or to help the student increase in their fluency while they're reading. And then also has other accessibility features. First author, again, with writing. Some of our students have to write with voice command. Some of our students have to write with operating a cursor, with their hand, or their neck, or their, sometimes their leg or their foot. So first author is- So First Author is really the structural teaching of writing and being able to give kids that have difficulty expressing their thoughts and feelings a medium to do that. This year, we're taking to study math and what interventions are needed. And the last thing in terms of career readiness and transition, we did adopt Project Discovery. It is a K through twelve transition career curriculum that meets the needs of students with very severe disabilities, all the way to students who have function with average intelligence. And basically, it's just a support that we felt was needed to prepare students with more significant disabilities to participate in an inclusive employment environment. That brings me to Ames Web. In terms of measuring goals and progress for students with IEPs, we wanted to have a web-based tool to measure growth. Our students that receive Tier Three interventions or the most intensive interventions, we want our teachers to be able to measure that growth for students on a regular basis, more so than short-cycle assessments or the PARC assessment or the alternate assessment which comes once a year. Project Search, which is our, thanks to you and our community and many people that have supported that initiative. We started our second cohort of interns at the Hilton Garden Inn. If any of you have the time on a weekday morning, I'd encourage you to have breakfast at the Hilton Garden Inn and see our students as they are part of the Hilton Garden Inn and an employee there in learning job skills, communication skills, social skills, and then as well as building skills towards obtaining employment once their one-year internship is complete. One of our students from last year was hired by our food services vendor. He currently works in Crown Point as a cook or a prep cook, probably be more appropriate term. Another of our interns was hired by the Hilton Garden Inn. She works in banquets and in the kitchen and in laundry. She has become one of their most valuable employees. So we're really excited about that. And another of our interns was hired full-time at the Quality Inn, which is a sister company to the Hilton Garden Inn, full-time in the laundry department. And she's quickly whipped that department into shape, so we're very excited about that. We are in the process, and when I say we, none of this happens without the team that I work with. I work with almost a hundred people every day, making sure that the needs of our students with disabilities, very often a community that's forgotten and not very visible, that their needs are met. So I want to recognize not only you all, but our staff and our families that help us in doing so. To conclude, I wanted to let you know that we are in the process of scheduling our quarterly meetings for parents for special education as well as gifted education. And I will share those dates with you when we have a firm schedule. Any questions?
I have a couple. Anybody? Do you have a separate webpage on the Gallup McKinley County?
We do have a separate webpage, but because we've been going through the migration and our individual who managed the webpage recently left to another company. So the answer to your question is yes, and it's a work in progress.
Okay, and I'm sure that we'll have resources for parents?
Yes, ma'am.
On that also?
Yes.
The other questions I have are, I don't know how your budget is or how you set up your budget, but I think I would really like to review that. And if you have your goals and objectives to that budget, I would really appreciate that too. And I don't know, within your budget, do you have monies for parents that can attend conferences or trainings or?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything to that effect?
Yes.
Okay. What other kind of trainings do you provide for your parents besides their quarterly meetings?
We provide training through the New Mexico Public Education Department's Autism Technical Assistance Team. Gallup McKinley is actually one of the leaders in that project, serving students with autism. A lot of the strategies and the training that we deliver also meets the needs of other students that have significant needs. We are happy to present to any parent or any group. We do a lot of school-based training based on the needs of students. So if a student has a health plan or a feeding plan or there are safety measures that require the student to be lifted by one or two or three people, we always include parents.
To be extended more because I think our community needs more training on IEPs, on laws, on 504s, what GATE or the gifted. Not because I really, I hear some complaints, but I've always referred them back to EDC or something and/or referred them back to their principals. Parents are not, sometimes I think they get very frustrated and that training needs to be given in the community. And I know they can come to EDC, they can come to like the webpage, website. But I think we need to go to them. And I think that those resources, even if it's a quarterly training in the community at the schools, at the chapter houses, this is a lot of valuable information that I think is needed within our community. And, you know, we did hear, I don't know if you know, earlier in some of the board meetings, the carryovers that were mentioned from the previous years. And how has that money been spent? I know that's a question that was given to us as a board member, but we are not privileged, we don't have that plan. But we would like to know how that money was allocated and where that money went. So I don't know if that's you, if that's Frank, if that's Devana.
I could speak to some of that. I don't have details in front of me. But again, like I said, the carryover was utilized to infuse our classrooms with the things that students need. Equipment, curriculum, teacher training. Every week, we have at least three trainings happening in our building or at the school site on the use of those new curriculums and materials. Really, the focus of that money was spent with the needs of students in mind. Not sure if I answered your question completely.
So the money, but we're not sure if it's all spent. Is it still being used?
When I came, when I was, when I started as a director, what I had to do was submit a plan to the Public Education Department and request for an extension to expend funds that were still lingering in carryover. And I did so, and they did provide me with the opportunity to do so. Everything that was in our plan that was submitted in June has been expended. And it was to be encumbered by September 30th. So I made sure that that was all taken care of.
Again, at the CES that I attended this morning, there's the program called TAP in that program. And they can, they provide a lot of assistance. It says the TAP consultant team consists of coordinators and eleven consultants. All team members have a wealth of experience in special education topics. And her name is Loretta Garcia. And I'll go ahead and give this to Mr. Chpeti again to pass on to you guys. But they have a lot of information on here that they could provide, some training and some information. I think every bit can help. If I could have a copy of those back?
The other thing that we're working on is collaborating with EPICS, which is Educating Parents of Indian Children, to bring some of that training that you're speaking of to the communities and to our parents, something we've done in the past, something we'll continue to do in the future.
Are we sending any parents this year?
We, this year is the first year they've had two conferences. In the past, it was just in the spring. So because of all these initiatives going off, I haven't, you know, I haven't been able to look at sending parents, but we absolutely can.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Manini.
I have one accommodation. I think you're doing a heck of a job with all of your hundreds and plus employees underneath you. I think with the Special Ed Department, you're doing a great job of what you reported to us. I knew, I know that we do not have Lynda Mood Bell back in our program, and I wish we did for our dyslexic students. That's my main, one of my main interests. And I was wondering approximately, are they still having Lynda Mood Bell enforcement or education to those teachers that already have been trained back into the students?
What we've seen is almost a complete turnover in regards, I mean, it's been years since we've put our teachers through Lynda Mood Bell. But we do have some staff that continue to do that. This year, I was able to obtain a reading specialist. And that individual is working with one of the coordinators on my team to address the reading needs of the resource rooms and the needs of students across the district. Some of the programs, and for now, we have had mostly a site-based approach or site-based decision-making in terms of what interventions principals and the leadership of the school want to implement to meet the needs of their students. Only recently, in working with Mr. Chpeti and the administration, have they said, you know, there are some needs that perhaps we need to look at a district level to address those needs and to perhaps do something like Lynda Mood Bell. So those are things that we're investigating. I want to make sure that whatever we do, we're getting, one, we're meeting the needs of students, and two, we're making good use of the time and the expenditures that we make.
I think even the TAP program was telling us that there is a shortage in the areas that you were saying of the, for your contractors. And I think, but where are you advertising? And where are you trying to find these positions to fill?
Of course, we're advertising on our website and Teachers to Teachers. We also advertise on New Mexico REAP. We also advertise in the local papers. And in national organizations or associations like the Occupational Therapy Association, they have their national organizations and their literature. For interpreters, I was able to contact the New Mexico Interpreters Association and meeting other colleagues across the state. We're able to share information and share resources in doing so. We also reach out to several universities. University of, University of New Mexico, New Mexico State University. We also look at Eastern and Arizona, Arizona State University and the University of Arizona. So those are just a few to name a few. But we, in order to meet the needs of our community, we're going to have to have programs that invite interns into our district. We've seen some good interns finish their program and then come back and be employees in the community. So that's kind of where we're leading at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if there's any other questions, but if you could forward your budget plan with your goals and objectives and then also dates of your upcoming parent meeting and trainings to the board? I would really like to attend that. And I did attend last year's Project Search at the Hilton Garden a couple of times. And that's an excellent program. And I think Special Ed also has a special heart, a special spot in my heart. My parents, my mom's been in Special Ed, worked with Special Ed, my sister's also. And I just did the bus driving part of it, but I was certified in Special Ed driving. So that's one thing that I think I would really like to attend some of those. So thank you for that, and I'm pretty sure some of the other board members would also.
Thank you. You all are welcome to come anytime.
Board members, it's now for a board report. Mr. Manini?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I did not attend those meetings prior to the events that were read. But coming back, I did volunteer to be an observer for the Community Emergency Drill where the plane crashed at Gallup High School and hit a bus and injured over thirty students. I remember this was a mock drill and two casualties were there. We went up to both hospitals. They showed us their triage, that they were performing on these patients. They had patients ready to be taken care of. One had a broken bone and it looked pretty gruesome, but it was the makeup and everything else was there for these technicians or hospital staff to take care of. But I did enjoy that. It was a good five hours. I enjoyed being as an observer. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
I have nothing at this time.
I attended the REMA Chapter Meeting. I also stopped by REMA Elementary. And I tried to stop by the high school, but the principal wasn't available there. I also attended the New Mexico Department of Transportation Public Hearing that was in Akama. A couple, the Thiru High, I'm sorry, the Thiru Chapter Meeting. Of course, all of our special meetings that we had with legislative work sessions. I also went on Friday to the meeting in Winter Rock where Frank and Paletta presented to the Navajo Nation School Board. And today, I attended the collaborative or cooperative educational services. This is my first time attending this meeting, and it was very informative. And I think they're going to continue to provide us with some more information. I think we should take advantage of all the free training that they have available for our staff. And that's all I have, board members, at this time. I'll read the notices. September 19, we have a parent-teacher conference. September 19, we have a board meeting at David Skeets at four o'clock. October 3, we have another Board of Education meeting. October 5, Region One meeting in Aztec.
That's been changed as reported to October 19.
Oh, yes.
Starting at 5:30.
October 17, we have a Board of Education meeting in Crown Point Mid-School, probably at 4:00 PM again. October 19, no school that a day. October 20th and 21st is fall break. November 7 is another Board of Education meeting. I was informed, I just remembered it, I think one of our board meetings is gonna be held in Thiru. Do you remember what day that was on? But they said it's during Thanksgiving break. I think that's one in Thiru, and, okay, I just remembered that. It was mentioned to me by the principal. Okay, we're down to M.
Correct.
Okay, what's the one in Thiru? Is that during, I think she said that's during spring break. Just to give you a heads up, I know she mentioned that to me, I was just looking at that. Okay, we're gonna go to M, Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA between Gallup McKinley County Schools and Wonder Rock School District. This is an action item.
Madam President, I have worked with Wonder Rock Superintendent, and we discussed the areas, so I added to, as soon as I can find it. We added the specific areas. First of all, we added tuition. Wonder Rock K-8, they had proposed a tuition of $44.87, grades nine through 12, $42.45. Our unit value is just over $4,000, but when you factor in ALL or special education dollars, it would go up a bit. So I did talk to the Public Education Department about in matching what they were doing, and Wonder Rock thought that would be good, that way we're not figuring it out for each individual On V, the transportation, we were talking about safe transportation pickup points being established with the district boundaries. So we set those boundaries to be that our district is allowing Wonder Rock transporting students along Old Coal Mine Road, including the housing developments of Pigeon Springs and Slick Rock. And then between Fort Defiance and Navajo, we established a halfway mark, so saying that they could transport students from the state line there at the stoplight by the hospital up two-mile marker 34, which is about halfway to Navajo. So those students are closer to go to Wonder Rock, and then, of course, the halfway point is closer for our students to go to Navajo. We'd be looking at about approximately 150 kids is what they estimated that they've had in the past coming from there. At this point, we have not asked to go into Arizona at all. We're still looking at roads west of Navajo itself into Arizona. I would ask you to approve this contingent upon our lawyer's blessing, especially on page 3D. He still hasn't given me the language on the any liability incurred in connection with this agreement as to school district, Arizona's subject to the immunity and limitations of... I need what goes there. So I would ask that you approve it pending his...okay?
Madam President?
Yeah, I would like to make the motion for approval with the approval of our legal aide, our attorney.
I have a couple of questions. So did, you said that the PED worked with you with the amount, so I'm assuming that means they did approve those amounts also?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President, and we need to remember, this is not money coming from our district. The state will be paying it from their contingency fund.
Yeah. And was there any discussion on impact aid? Because that's one thing, like I said, when I, before I walked in, I was talking to Andy, and that's one thing, he was kind of concerned about how the exchange of students would affect also the impact aid, and if the federal government needs some input on that was another concern. But I think, I think once we send this, I, other question to him, maybe he could collaborate, elaborate a little more on that, because he was wondering about the impact aid and how that would be, the funds would be moved or paid or without it being a big obstacle.
Madam President, that's what I brought up at the work session with Hess.
Yeah.
And the council delegates, we're gonna be contacting Mr. Lot in Washington DC and asking a representative from their department to attend so we could iron out the issues. We were denied last year 50 students that came in from Arizona into New Mexico schools. We were not allowed to count those. It's good that we caught ours beforehand, and then we also heard that Arizona had collected money from it and was now having to pay back, and that was really killing Red Mesa.
Yeah.
Small district having to pay back millions of dollars. So we're not in that position. Ours were denied beforehand, so we just didn't receive the money. We still educate the kids no matter what. We didn't say, since we don't get the money, go back to Arizona. We still educated them, but we are trying to negotiate with our representatives at the national level and through the tribal council delegates and such to have the national group come in and help to mediate these students coming to school.
Well, I know we've been working on this for a while, and they do need this agreement, but I think we can go with your motion. Mr. Mitchell? I'll ask for a roll call.
Mr. Manini?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna say our attorney will be looking at this probably tomorrow, and we'll get word soon after, and then you'll let us know.
I did email him today on this. I guess he discussed it with the president. I will contact him tomorrow and get the language, get it corrected, and contact each of you stating it has been corrected.
Thank you.
Madam President? No further items on the agenda. I move this meeting be adjourned.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Manini. Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Thank you.